I'm thrilled to share a few exciting updates tonight. The CNS department has done it again, winning the prestigious Farm to Summer Award for One and a Million Melon. For the second year in a row, this award recognizes the incredible efforts we put into our summer feeding program, where we served up fresh, locally sourced fruits and provided agricultural education and fun activities to our students. We are so proud of this achievement. Way to go CNS. Our risk management team is excited to announce that we will be hosting the Active Shooter Training from Knowledge Saves Lives, KSL on November 2nd at Eagle Ranch in Mesa Linda Middle School. Plus, mark your calendars for March 8th, you will be at Morgan Kincaid and West Creek with the same opportunity. It's a fantastic opportunity to learn and stay prepared. Out with the old and in with the new, IT is gearing up for an exciting eWaze pickup at all sites on October 15th. Let's clear out the clutter and make way for the future. This week I had the pleasure of visiting several sites, including George Visual Performing Arts with Ms. Ridley. We spent time visiting multiple classes from art, music, and TK. In Ms. Braille's class, I was watching students participate balancing as they were playing Hot Lava, one of my favorite games too. I also had the opportunity of visiting our beautiful campus at Melva Davis and watching her students discuss math and reading. Thank you, Ms. Usculich. Lastly, I want to take a moment and recognize Westside Park and our wonderful principal, Ms. Petolha. At the beginning of the year, she shared a beautiful story of the Rainbow Fish with her students to kick off the positives note. The Rainbow Fish, if you don't know, is a heartwarming tale about the joy of sharing and the happiness it brings to both ourselves and others. It also illustrates the challenges that come with sharing and its profound impact on friendships. The story resonated with me deeply because I shared it with my own children when they were young, hoping to instill the value of friendships and sharing with their hearts. Thank you, Ms. Petolha, in sharing this opportunity and this important lesson with our staff, our students, and our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gonzalez. At this time, we have our interim assistant Brittany Freeman, the sources, Esther.
Thank you, Dr. Lachra. And thank you. Good evening, President Levente French, esteemed Board of Trustees, Cabinet, and valued committee members. It's such an honor to sit at a dedicated district. It's a pleasure to share my first week, six days here in our Atlanta. So just thank you, glad to meet you, Servo, and I just wanted to tell you at the very beginning, out the back here. And everyone I've met has been so kind and generous and has really helped me navigate, and so I really appreciate that. What I've done so far, the first six days, Servo, we had negotiations with the teachers' union. I thought it felt very well. Had an opportunity to visit a couple of schools, Mesa Linda and El Mirage. I was able to get into some classrooms with El Mirage and saw some amazing and exceptional teachers, Ms. Ash, Ms. Juarte, and Ms. Morales. Exceptional teachers, so thank you for the opportunity for that as well. I can't wait to visit the rest of schools and visit the rest of teachers and have that same positive experience. I've been conducted by one of my staffs, tried to get to know them and navigate and see what their needs are and how I can support them as well. Had an opportunity to get to some departments, but I tend on getting to all of them and seeing how we can really serve and help them out as well. This past weekend, HR, we served and we actually went to recruitment there. Had several people visit and talked about where we're going and what we're doing in our district. So it was a very positive experience for everyone. Moving forward, like I said, I want to visit all the schools and see how our HR team can really support each of the schools. I have walked transportation facilities, been in special education department, and I just really want to build up positive relations and bridges to really support, based on each department's individual's needs. It's important to me to recognize employees doing good work, so I think that's something that me and my team bring to the table. I'm learning a lot. I really tend to lean towards a lot of communication, collaboration, and just being patient in this new role. So thank you, and it's a pleasure serving our district.
Thank you, Esther. Okay, thank you very much. Got those updates actually for staff reports and presentations. Sartre Wonkin.
At this time, we have academic services, Andrew Dwyazali, with a presentation on school plans for student achievement.
All right, good evening. It's my pleasure to present to you this evening an overview of our SIPSA, our school plans for student achievement, which will be presented to you later for an overall approval for the 24-25 school year. So our objectives this evening are to provide an overview and structure of the 24-25 SIPSA, provide an overview of how funds have been planned to improve performance for all students, and share upcoming presentation schedules in which the schools will come and present their plan. Slide three talks about our plans just in general. They were developed with the review, certification, and advice of applicable school advisory groups, so like your DLAC, your SFC School Site Council. They're annually reviewed and updated by the School Site Council, including the proposed expenditures of funds. So all of those need to be approved by your School Site Council before bringing it to the board. They're aligned with our goals for improving student achievement based on the verifiable state data. They describe how progress toward academic performing goals will be evaluated. They address how funds will be used, and they're reviewed and approved by the local governing board whenever changes are affecting the progress of students. While the School Site Council approves the plan, it's the board who has the final approval process for our SIPSA. When you read the school plans, they're really about five sections. If you wanted to break it down, there's probably a full lot, and I'm going to summarize it in about five sections. The first section is the plan description. It talks about the educational partner involvement, resource inequities, and the comprehensive needs assessment components. The second section is the data section. It talks about school performance data, gives you demographics, enrollment data, overall performance. Section three talks about goals, strategies, and proposed expenditures. This year, it was required that all schools have a minimum of six goals, and I'll go over that in a minute. Section four talks about budget summary, budgeted funds, and expenditures. And then that final section is the governance pages where it talks about your SSC membership. You'll see signatures, recommendations, and assurances. Slide five shows the cycle of inquiry process in which we use and the checklist to create the final product. All sites used a cycle of inquiry, which was a continuous improvement cycle, where we talked about planning, acting on what we have, reflecting on those plans in either planning again or analyzing that data a little bit deeper. While the templates are the same and required, you're going to see sometimes that things seem to be repetitive from school to school because those are elements we want to make sure stay in there and also that are required to be placed in the plan. Slide six speaks to our high expectations. So each school site was required to have at least six goals, all of which are directly aligned to the LCAP. Each goal will have the goal, they'll have the description of the steps taken to increase student achievement, the students that it will serve, and the proposed expenditures needed to realize that goal. Each school has an English language arts goal, they have a math goal, they have an English learner goal, they have a special education goal, a culture and climate goal, which could be, some schools chose chronic absenteeism. Some schools are working on suspensions and student engagement. And then the final goal is a parent, family, and community goal. So making sure that we're actively addressing each of those areas to make sure that we move our district forward. It's going to take all of these to keep moving forward. We're committed to equitable services driven by research, recall, reflection, and response, which follows the continuous cycle of improvement. How will funds be used to improve the academic performance of students? So the SIPSA is comprised of the LCFM, the SNC, which is our supplemental and concentration. There's Title I funds represented in there. We also have the Equity Multiplier, which is new for us this year. And then we have several schools, five schools, so six schools are Equity Multiplier schools, and five of our schools are CSI schools, which are comprehensive school improvement. So those schools who are Equity Multiplier or CSI, they get additional funds to address the needs that are representing their particular group of students at their school site. So this particular slide gives a breakdown of how much funds each site is receiving. This is not including their general aid allocation that they receive for things like supplies, office supplies, things like that. Any, you know, kind of supplies that they need. Also, we added lottery to this. Lottery is technically not any categorical, but we just wanted to give you an idea. You also have this particular handout in your binder that you have in front of you as well. This particular you also have inside of your binder, it's kind of, we like to call it a little bit of a cheat sheet because the binders are rather large, but it's a breakdown of goals and the money's allotted and how they plan to accomplish those goals. So in this particular example, you see Melva Davis. You see the six required goals that they have, and it's a little more descriptive that you have on the handout. But the first goal is English Language Arts. All student groups will approve by 7% as measured by the CAS annually. They've allotted $119,074 for ELA. And they will use that designated allotment to support standard-based implementation with resources, materials, supplemental materials, technology, and professional development. Training in PD, like Project Lead the Way, STEAM, and CTE, or Career Technical Education. So all of those actually go toward Project Lead the Way, STEAM, CTE. Those are very much a part of the culture at Melva Davis to continue. Students will have access to advanced courses and enhance the library based on adequate from the students and staff. So and then I will also look at Goal Five, which is a culture and climate. And so Melva Davis chose to speak specifically about chronic absenteeism, and they want to reduce our overall chronic absenteeism by 10%. So we're going to address removing barriers to students of attending and providing a safe and engaging environment. And they have allotted $78,500 for this goal. And that money will be used to support intervention, social skill groups, PBIS, behavior assemblies, professional development, and training. And then our final slide shows our school presentation list. So the next board meeting will be on October 28th, and we're going to continue all the way to January 28th. We look forward to going into more detail with each school site coming forward and what they're going to specifically be doing to move their school and increase achievement for our students. So we look forward to that, and I thank you for allowing me to give you this presentation this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Dwyazan. Does anyone have any questions?
I do have a few questions from Dr. Dwyazan. Thank you for the presentation. How are goals measured and how often are they measured?
That's a very good question. So the goals that they have are, so the six goals in particular, is that what you're referring to? So each school site, you'll notice on each school site's plan, so I'll go with English Language Arts, for example, that's the first one. So English Language Arts, they have a specific goal that they've written. And so when they've written that goal in their strategies, they're telling you how it's going to be measured. So for English Language Arts, for example, you would look at IREDA data, you could look at CAS, you can look at Common Assessments. We have some schools are using DIBELS to measure for kids who are TK and are, not TK, K1, and those main levels. So it specifically says, and then we have a list of, I would say for Language Arts alone, there's probably a good 10 measurements that we can use to measure how students are doing.
And my next question is, looking at the data, still the African-American subgroup is still falling far behind. And what is the plan to increase student achievement in all areas, math, language arts, and everything? Does the Equity Multiplier come into place with that?
So the Equity Multiplier for African-American subgroup, the Equity Multiplier actually goes for foster youth, English learners are foster and are making even to the students. But when we look at African-American, thank you for asking that question, because when we look at African-American students, we really, even though we list certain school groups, in every school plan, you will see that African-American students are addressed and overall. So that includes several things and includes specific training for our students, not for our students, for our teachers, for our staff, for our leaders, making sure that we have a, we do a new process that we've implemented this year, and those are data roundtables. And so at those roundtables, they need to come in, I'm there, my full team is there, and we talk about every piece of data that they have, and that includes our African-American subgroup as well.
Will increased assessment be given to the subgroup for their student achievement?
Increased assessment?
Assessment, benchmark assessment, additional tutoring.
Yes.
Because every year I hear this story, but we have no recruitment. And that's why I ask how it goes measured, because we need to see an improvement with our African-American subgroup in our area.
Absolutely, we do. And additionally, what I also like with about our plan is that final goal, which is parent-family engagement. And so we actually, when I was, we have actually two specific schools in general who are wanting to start African-American parent advisory councils in which they bring parents in. So we were actually, just that Victoria, we got them this morning speaking about that, how we're going to launch that. We're going to neighboring district to see how they're implementing that, and we want to bring that here. We believe fully that if we, as much as we can engage our parents and families, that equates to success for our students. So we really want to focus on bringing that piece to our district.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Webster.
I have a few questions in regards to the creations of these documents. Are we holding regular collaboration meetings for admin staff to understand the overall expectations of the documents?
Are you specifically speaking to like what they have in their whole plan?
I know you mentioned that we have DLAC, we have all the input, but as a district, how are we supporting each site, making sure that they understand the processes that are required?
Thank you for that question. So the parent groups, I'll speak specifically to the parent groups. So each school site has parent groups, so like their ELEC, which is our English Learner Advisory Council. At the district level, we have DLEC, which is District English Learner Advisory Council. We also have School Site Council, we have District Advisory Council, and we also have LCAP meetings that are held. So at those meetings, we do break apart these documents. We do tell what's happening, what's going on, and we also teach our parents what kind of questions can you ask or what should you look for when you're attending these meetings at your school site so that they understand the document as a whole?
Okay, perfect. And then we are keeping track of the meetings being held at the individual school sites for further record-keeping?
Absolutely. We have to. It's a requirement. And especially this year, you've heard me mention a few times, this is an FPM, your federal program monitoring. They will be asking for it. So yes, we do keep track of those.
Perfect. I do want to say I appreciate your presentation, and I thank you for your time and your hard work. It is my understanding that you've had to run a lot of this load, so thank you so much for your dedication.
Thank you. I do have a question.
So as I'm booking in the binder and I'm seeing the dashboard graphics and the scores and STEM, I just like, do you think we could need, so I can see here exactly what it means? Because it says here for line class school, it says 144.4 points below standard decreased minus 9.5 points. So does that mean that they improved or that it got worse? It decreased, like went lower, or the fact that that was low, it decreased and went, that's why I'm...
Can you repeat it again? Because I don't have it in front of me.
It's just if we can see how it is to compare with like the previous year. So it would be helpful for me to see like, you know, hey, how did they do compared to last year? And then, you know, hopefully see what they intend to do for the next school year to hopefully bring that.
Yes, so thank you. There's a few things I want to address with that. So the data that you're looking at, I want to remind you, is last year's data. It is not current. And so what you're looking for, when you talk about that DFS and it's a Midas something, that means that that's the distance from standard. So let's say I've had 105 points, negative 105 points, I'm 105 points away from where I need to be. So I'm looking for that to continuously decrease and go above, which I would have a positive, should I meet standard and go beyond that.
Okay, so when it says 144.4 points below standard, and then it said decreased negative 9.5 point, 9.5. So that means it got closer to that point of where it should be.
Actually, if they say decrease, it would have went lower, but I would need to look at those two years back to back. Yes, so to answer your question, yes, I can get to you again.
Yeah, because that's where I'm getting confused, like so decrease, did it come down or did it go up?
It's very confusing. The state didn't help anybody with how they come up with.
They never do.
They never do. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Dr. Dwyazan. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll run along to section five, closed session declarations. We will take an item as 5.02 through 5.06 at the closed session. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board.
The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point in the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinions with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage and dialogue or answer questions. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on closed session agenda items only must complete and submit an AESD speaker request form five minutes before the meeting is called to order. Public comments will only be taken on agenda items during the discussion of those items. The board values public comments, and although the Board of Trustees cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, the Board of Trustees listens carefully and appreciates input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each closed session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to 20 minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentations, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue, and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Ms. LeVey, do we have any speakers for ADTA?
Madam President, the board calls on Janet Barater.
Thank you.
Good evening, Madam President, Madam Trustees. I hope simply can just.
By, by.
On my, none. I'm here.
The red light? Good evening all. I'll be really honest with you. I'm desperate to stand before you with a positive report, with good news, and with information about a strong district. Strong teachers, strong staff, support staff, strong administration, and strong students. I'm finding it difficult, as I am pretty discouraged, a bit beaten down, as most of us are, after many, many years of struggle. Our primary and most current challenge has been for a fair contract with a competitive salary scale. But we have to dig deeper to uncover what is the root of that struggle. It's a craving that every person has, a need for respect and appreciation for the job that we do. Recently, we heard about an employee whose passion and dedication deserves to be rewarded. Well, every teacher here is passionate and dedicated, and we have long felt overlooked and our contributions disregarded. Can you look at each one of these spaces and tell them they're not dedicated? Can you look at them and tell them that they don't have passion that counts in the classroom, is not recognized? Can you tell them they don't deserve to be paid fairly? This district has faced many challenges in the past, and after each crisis, we are still standing. Most detrimental of all is the revolving door superintendent, the constant turnover in our administrative cabinet. However, it seems now that a team is assembled that will stick with us and begin to heal the areas of our district that have suffered the most. Over the past 17 or so years, under the leadership we currently have, there has been a lack of transparency that has led to deep-seated distrust. I am willing to go out on a limb and extend some trust, as Dr. Walker has already demonstrated with actions, as she is here to roll up her sleeves and do the tough work of fixing the problems in our district. With alacrity, she filled the position of Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. And although both hers and his title are interim, I believe it is in the district's best interest to move forward together and keep this team united, so that our students can be educated in an environment where teachers feel appreciated and supported. Dr. Walker recently used the metaphor of a marriage to describe our relationship, and a marriage actually begins with a contract. That contract is what our members are looking toward and hoping for. With communication and transparency, we can hopefully face a better future than the past we've survived. This district has much room for improvement, but I see that as a huge opportunity for our new administration. Yes, they are new and coming into a story several chapters deep in trauma and distrust. But we are cautiously optimistic that there truly is a new day dawning for Atlantico Elementary School District. Our recent experience with bus problems on field trips have exposed a need, and Dr. Walker is responding to that need with speed and efficiency. To date, we have some scheduling confusion, and we will move forward with better communication. There is no struggle we cannot overcome. I am spending this week visiting every campus to talk to teachers. I'm also talking to support staff, security, secretaries, principals, anyone willing to sit for a moment, have a snack, and share their perspective. By the end of the week, I expect to have a pretty good picture of the culture of this district, the climate of our schools, and the needs of the teachers and other employees. In other news, ADTA will be attending each October family event, whether it's a fall festival, or a chunk or treat, or the STEAM scream event at Melva Davis, and hosting a book giveaway table for each student to come and choose a book for free. This is a community engagement opportunity to show that we are invested in our children. As this event grows, year after year, we did it last year at a few sites, and we're getting better and better at being at all the sites. As this event grows in the future, maybe the district office would like to partner with ADTA in providing these books. And perhaps in the future, we could team up to offer Raffle prizes or some gift cards. Perhaps we can tie the Raffle to attendance. In September, October, students with perk attendance could earn Raffle tickets that will be drawn at the ADTA book giveaway table toward the end of October. These are some of the creative ideas for collaboration that we have. But it takes time and energy to coordinate those efforts, and right now, our energies are focused on settling a fair contract. So all of these good ideas have to take a backseat. This is just one small way that I can see our students and our AID goals being served. But this cannot happen until our contract is settled. So you see all of our efforts in the classroom and working with administration, the hope that we have in our new cabinet, all the possibilities for improvement in numerous areas, it all begins and ends with a fair contract. Please direct the district to settle with us on October 23rd. We are holding out hope one more time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. LeVey, do we have anyone for CSEA?
Madam President, the board calls on Diane Lynn or a representative from CSCA. Madam President, does anyone, if there's anyone from CSEA tonight?
Okay, thank you. Do we have any audience members that would like to sit?
Madam President, the board calls on Greg Idefado.
Good evening, everybody, the audience.
Distinguished people of fun.
My name is Mr. Alfaro, or Greg Alfaro, and I want to talk about counselors in Adalanto School District. I have been a school counselor since 2004, and ever since I've been a school counselor, I've seen the need for, for school counselors and mental health support rise. I've also seen the, the school counseling go from just checking a box to actually being part of, an integral part of the school design. I started my tenure here in Adalanto in 2019, and without a doubt, I've, I've experienced, been a part of situations where I am truly grateful for the fact that this district does have educators who embrace the idea of school counseling within their schools. I am grateful for the fact that our middle schools have a good staff of counselors, ready to meet the needs of our students, offering guidance and support in a time of need when cooler heads need to prevail. Currently, I am a foster youth counselor. I have a case load of four different schools. My main priority is to meet the needs and work with all of our foster kids, social workers, foster parents, and to just offer support as a way to shown at the school district, we care. I think that working at an elementary school once a week, because that's kind of what I do, I think it's a bandage to a situation that needs care, time, and advocacy. Myself and the other three foster youth counselors do our very best to meet those lead kids where they, where they need it, offer support. But from, from what, just me doing it, I, I know that I spend a lot of my time really trying to figure out how, what's the best way that I could, could help them when I, when I'm there at the school. And oftentimes, I have to be okay with not doing everything I can, because my time is limited. When people ask me, what do I do as a counselor? If you were to ask me that question maybe 20 years ago, when I first started, I'd give you this long list of advocacy. But now it kind of boils down to.
Thirty seconds.
And it boils down to, how can I help? Because I feel like if the kids are safe in school, they are comfortable. And if they're comfortable in school, they are learning. And I feel that a school counselor on campus greatly deepens their ability to meet the kids' their needs, as opposed to a counselor not being there or a part-time counselor. I feel, I, I just came to this information that I know that LPAK, funding for school counselors in the elementary school, the budget has been passed. I am optimistic that we could work together, so that we can have a, a plan to hopefully try to hire elementary school counselors in the fall. I don't know if that's a possibility, but that's a hope that I have. I know that we, we as ADTA, we're still trying to work through our concerns about teacher contract, but I do think that whatever that contract is, it should, it should include school counselors. As to the best of my knowledge, most of the school districts, if not all, have school counselors at every level, from elementary all the way up through high school, and I think Adalanto needs to have that opportunity as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
President, the board calls on Kimberly Smith.
Good evening, everyone. Board President Love French, board members, interim superintendent Walker, cabinet members, ADTA, CSCA, students, family, and the Adalanto community. My name is Kimberly Smith, and I am a fifth grade teacher at Victoria McGathen Dual Immersion Elementary School. It is with great enthusiasm that I stand before you today to welcome our new interim superintendent, Dr. Walker, and interim assistant superintendent, Mr. Shiflett. We are thrilled to have you both join our educational family, and we look forward to the unique qualities and fresh perspectives you will definitely bring to our district. As you embark on this new journey with us, I want to emphasize the importance of fostering strong relationships with our dedicated teams, especially ADTA and CSCA. Your role in this collaboration and open communication are the cornerstones of a thriving educational environment. Together, we can create an atmosphere where everyone feels valued and supported, ultimately benefiting our students and the community at large. We encourage you to visit our schools, immerse yourselves in our vibrant culture, and get to know our incredible staff and students. At Victoria McGathen Elementary School, for example, you will witness firsthand the passion and commitment of our teachers and the bright smiles of our students. We pride ourselves on offering a nurturing and engaging learning environment, particularly through our Dual Immersion program. This program enriches our students' linguistic abilities and fosters cultural appreciation and inclusivity, preparing them for a globalized world. I'd like to spotlight is one of our many phenomenal teachers, Melissa Rodriguez, who has been a cherished member of our AESD family for years. Melissa has worn many hats throughout her journey with us, and now she is settling into her role as a teacher at Victoria McGathen Elementary School. Her deep familiarity with our students and her well-known firm, yet fair approach have significantly, significantly impacted her classroom. Melissa's commitment to our community and her ability to connect with students have quickly earned her the respect of both her students and their families. Let's rally around her, providing the support and mentorship she deserves as she continues to grow and thrive in her role. Investing in teachers like Melissa ensures a vibrant and nurturing environment for all our students. Thank you, Dr. DeWaisan, for your visit this morning. It was wonderful for you to see my MTSS group actively engaged in their learning. Didn't catch us off guard. I wanted to share a fun moment from your departure. After you left, the students eagerly tried to spell your name. They came up with variations like.
Thirty seconds.
DOYSAN, DOZAN, DOSAON, and DOE SAN. I eventually helped them spell it correctly, and we had a great conversation about the challenges of English. It was a perfect opportunity to remind them that while English can be tough, we are here to tackle those challenges together. Dr. Walker and Mr. Shiflett, your leadership is pivotal in maintaining this supportive culture. We fully believe you can champion initiatives that celebrate our teachers and recognize their hard work. Promoting a healthy work environment can empower our educators to inspire our students every day. Let's ensure that every teacher feels appreciated and every student feels empowered. With your guidance, I am confident we can cultivate a positive collaborative atmosphere that uplifts everyone. Once again, welcome, Dr. Walker and Mr. Shiflett. We are excited to embark on this journey with you and look forward to achieving great things together. Thank you.
Thank you.
The board calls on Troy Spence.
Good evening, how you guys doing? Good evening, Madam President, Madam Superintendent, I feel for you. I want to share a letter that, as my wife, that's the best thing she can afford you guys for 14 years. And to share a letter that she got from a former student, which shows deeds. You know, when I'm out with her, we're around Big Brazil, she has so many students that's 20 some years old, that comes up and remembers her, and it's amazing. So this is the letter, from a student or a student named Mariah. She says, "My name is Mariah E. Johnson. I'm not sure if you remember me, but I was in your ASB class around the year 2016 at Colton Middle School. I was actually writing this letter because a professor of mine mentioned always letting the ones who impact your life know that they make they've made. I am a fifth year scholar at the illustrious Alabama A&amp;M University, where I studied sociology and criminal justice. When arriving at my ASBCU, I had no clue what was in store for me or what to even expect. I was so far from home, I didn't know anyone, I was overall scared. Then one day, I came across an email about interviews being posted to join the Student Activities Board. I took the chance and went to the interview and got amazing feedback and was accepted into the organization, where we did everything for school spirit leadership. The following year, I went to a keyboard position in the organization and succeeded. I was an organization secretary while I was in the opportunity to meet your tribal, meet new people, and discover my strong desire to lead and make a difference. I say all this to say, the first step of discovering my strong ability and passion to lead was a dead grade. In your class, can I thank you? Through ASB, you gave students the opportunity to be creative, express themselves, and become leaders, they didn't even know they could be. After becoming the secretary of ASB at my ASBCU, I knew there was more for me. I joined other organizations, continued to lead, and now, three years later, I'm still doing the same. I commonly say that as service like HCU's N double A C P chapter's assistant secretary and their social media coordinator. And every day, I love reading more and more. I want to, I want to be the change in someone's life as you were the change in mine. It was great pleasure and the utmost respect I command you for being the teacher that you were and continue to be for guiding your students. So what you do, I hope this letter reaches you, because when a teacher is inspirational and dedicated as you, they deserve to know. Although I wasn't the best student during the time I was at Colton Middle.
Thirty seconds.
If there was one class I will never forget, it would be your ASB class. I know I'm not the first, and I definitely will be the last student with a life ready to be impacted by a person like yourself. But hopefully, this letter can help you make, help you make see the work you've been doing for me for many years and play, paying off through the life of your students. I am finishing my undergraduate years at Alabama A&amp;M, and then I will be attending another ASBCU, where I can receive my masters in interdisciplinary studies and criminality. I hope to hear from you soon, and that I get a chance to continue to share my accomplishments with you, with you and take you through the remainder of my journey. Again, thank you for the opportunity to be your student, for being a presence in my life. Best in all foremost regards, Mariah Jensen. I had my work pass from out to the front, we had to be there, but I can think that's good. Thank you.
Good to come in for hearing me. The board calls on Angela Jolly.
And sit there for someone, make any change or not.
I do want to say, say thank you to the ones that spoke, because boy, they spoke fabulously.
because, boy, they spoke fabulously. Thank you for all you do, and thank you for being here tonight. Welcome, cabinet, members of the board. I'm going to try to make this brief. So, I just wanted to touch on a couple of the closed item sessions so you enter into closed session. The first one is twelve point two-three, and I could be wrong because I don't know all of your legalities. But we did hire a assistant superintendent for HR, and it's, that was on the fourth. But I saw on the board agenda twelve point two-three that he's being ratified tonight. So, I'm just kind of confused on why he was at the cart before the horse. So, that was one question. The other question that I have is fourteen point oh-two, increasing the budget by forty-five thousand dollars for the interim superintendent. Why that would be on the agenda when we hire somebody for seventy-four thousand dollars for five months of work while our teachers still go without a raise from last year and this year? And this consultant was hired to offset professional development for interim superintendents, so I'm just kind of confused about that money. And then, public comment for five point oh-two is the negotiations that are ongoing with our teachers who have not received a raise in close to two years. Yet, we are at a board meeting, and management employees get a step and call him two years with being in less than the district of seven months. And we have teachers who have been here over thirty years and are still waiting to see that raise. Or not even a raise, but just a cost of living increase. The district received a massive jump in salaries, which is not fair to the people sitting here in our audience. Our teachers are passionate, as you can see, even receiving letters from Alabama, right? Is that right? So, we're all passionate about what we do. I visited Mesa Linda last week, helping teachers who are going out on stress leave, putting in arms' length fights as I was walking through the campus. Two fights broke out. One was my student from last year. Hey, how you doing? I thought you were going to change this year, but I guess not. But we always try to make that difference. And when we see that, and you guys see it, it's really tough on some of the teachers and then putting themselves in the line of defense. Especially when you have teachers who are having Instagram webpages, which I showed the principal.
Thirty seconds.
Teachers trying to get teachers fired, which is just beyond my concept of thinking. But it happens. Students don't like being told that they have to put away their phones. Or when a teacher asks them to take away their phones, they're called names such as the B-word, or, you know, go fly a kite. We can use the language that they use. And so, we are put in that limelight, which is not fair to the teachers. So, we should, without teachers being increased in their salaries, I don't believe anyone should be getting an increase in salary and should decline a massive raise until teachers sell. We need someone on the board also to withhold the highest ethical and moral standards and has integrity to do what is right for our students, staff, and community. So, we ask that you mark your absentee I'm not going to say that, but just please, when you go into closed session, please make sure that you are doing one.
Thank you.
By pressing a duck, concludes by speakers.
Thank you. Trustees, I need a motion for recess to close session.
Trustee Webster, I motion to recess to close session. Stewart, I sec-second.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Stewart, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye. Motion passed four zero. The time is six thirty-seven for in closed session. Thank you.
Welcome back, everyone. Reconvening to open session. The time is eight oh-eight. Call to order. Ms. Leve, will you please take role?
Trustee Stewart. Present.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, present.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, present.
Trustee La French.
La French, present. The quorum has been established. Section nine, closed session reports.
Webster, I motion to accept the recommendations for closed session report five point oh-five for the expulsion panels, recommendation for student three, four, nine, two, four, six for the rest of the semester and the next semester with the completion of the rehabilitation plan.
Stewart, I sec-second.
Ms. Leve, please call for the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Stewart, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye. Motion passed four zero. Public testimony. Ms. Leve, do we have any speakers for open session?
Madam President, we do. We have Debbie Thomas.
Okay, thank you. The public comment period is administered by state law and is the point of the meeting set aside for members of the public to share their opinion with the board. Open meeting laws do not permit the board to engage in dialogue or answer questions. Any person who wishes to address the governing board on open session agenda and non-agenda items only must complete a golden speaker rod and submit form and submit it to the assistant to the superintendent before the meeting is called to order. The Board of Trustees value public comment, and although the Board of Trustees cannot take action or discuss items not on the agenda, the Board of Trustees listen carefully and appreciate input from the public. Additionally, a public speaker can be cut off for exceeding the allotted time or for willfully causing an actual disruption to the meeting. Before cutting a person off or removing someone, the board will give at least one clear warning. If you were cut off or warned last time, please consider that your warning. Individual speakers are allowed three minutes to address the board on each open session agenda item. The board limits the total time for public input on each item to twenty minutes. With board consent, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed for public presentation, depending on the topic and the number of persons wishing to be heard. The president may take a poll of speakers for or against a particular issue and may ask that additional person speak only if they have something new to add. Please, you may speak.
Is it on? Okay, I'm Debbie Thomas. I'm twenty-nine years in the district. I've kind of listened to you guys the last couple of meetings, so I felt compelled to wait. Every week, you've been asking, or every board meeting, you've kind of been hard on Dr. Doyzan, saying, well, what are we doing? What are we doing? What are we doing? And I want to say that three years ago, or a couple of years ago, she tried to come here and brought a thing to have literacy specialists and reading specialists. And it's been three years and still nothing. And I know, Mrs. La French, you said that that's your passion, but we still don't have that. If the teachers could make a difference on their own with behavior and everything that we had, then it would be being done. But we still don't have anything. Visit the districts around us. They all have literacy specialists. They have reading specialists. They have, if you want a strong MTSS program, you need to have that second tier in place, and it can't be done by the regular ed teachers. We want them to be able to read. We need to start doing stuff. And quite frankly, it's going to have to come from you guys to make those decisions. I'm going to bring up my school right now. So, Mrs. Ridley, she's kind of tried to take her step on her own and has created a learning center. She has it run by a long-term sub right now. But imagine a teacher that is certified with a master's in reading or a reading specialist program, how successful that could be. So, really, you need to, in my opinion, you need to start looking into those things. You can't just keep saying, well, what are you going to do? Because if you keep doing the same thing and make no changes, we're never going to improve. And I feel like that she brought this up three years ago, and I got knocked down by you guys, and it's never come back up. And yet, I've listened to you the last few board meetings going, what about these test scores? What about these test scores? Well, there's a solution right there that I think you guys should look into. And I'm going to tell you how much power that you have to make that decision. So, when I was the bargaining chair, I told the HR person, you know what? I want to get a middle school prep period. He told me I was crazy. And then he went and spoke to the board members, and he came back and said, okay, let's figure it out. They said to do it. And we have, we have a prep period because I said, off the cuff, let's do it, and you said, yes, do it. So, you have the power to start getting those extra resources that we need. Reading specialists? You want to bring down special ed? Start getting to read by second grade. And it's not going to happen with the behaviors and the over, you know, there's just too much going on right now. So, please, with your passion for early education, we need to start looking at that again and looking at the reading specialists. Visit those other schools. I know that she wanted to do math first, but language is my, kind of my thing. But, because I think you should all be reading by second grade because if they're not, then they're at risk for the rest of their time. I taught middle school for a while. There was kids reading at first grade and seventh grade. They're going to drop out of high school. So, you know, that's what we want to stop doing. So, that's something that when you're asking what she can do to change, that's one of the things that you guys can start
Thirty seconds.
taking her seriously on, is start looking into that extra support for the teachers, the pull-out programs. Talk to Mrs. Ridley about what she's doing. I know that other schools are doing stuff. Don't get me wrong, I just know what about my school. But go to other districts, see what their learning specialists are doing so that maybe we can start, instead of being behind, we can start being ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Leve, is there anyone else?
That concludes tonight's speakers.
Thank you. Section eleven, adoption of the minutes. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the board minutes as a written and order filled for the regular board meeting minutes of September the twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four?
Stewart, I mo- motion to accept the min- minutes?
Trustee Turner, I second.
Ms. Leve, will you please take the vote?
Trustee Webster.
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Stewart, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye. Motion passed. Section twelve, consent agenda. We're taking items twelve point zero-two through twelve point twenty-eight. Does any trustee want to pull an item? Hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Trustee Turner, I motion to approve the consent agenda.
Stewart, I sec-second.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Stewart, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye. Motion passed. Section fourteen, new business. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve the twenty twenty-four, twenty-five school plans for student achievements?
Trustee. Trustee Webster, I motion to approve the twenty-four, twenty-five school plans for student achievement.
Stewart, I sec-second.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Can we go into discussion?
Oh, I'm sorry. Discussion.
I would just like to say, thank you, Dr. Doyzan, spelt with a D. Oh, no, I'm just kidding. That was really cute. And thank you for resubmitting those plans with the corrections. I wasn't able to go through all of them, but I did see a substantial change in the school site plans and the recommended actions. I'm happy to see that. And I can't wait until the principals will be able to present their school site plans as stated. Thank you.
Ms. Leve, without any further discussion, will you please take the vote?
Trustee Webster.
Webster, aye.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Stewart, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye. Motion passed. Section fourteen point zero-two. Trustees, can I get a motion to approve and update the allocated annual budget for the interim superintendent and interim assistant superintendent of human resources for the amount not to exceed of forty-five thousand for each position for travel and conference for a total of a hundred and eighty thousand?
Trustee Turner, I motion to approve.
Stewart, I sec-second.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Can we go into discussion?
Let the record reflect that I need the discussions on here.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I, I just want a clarification that the forty-five thousand dollars is for each cabinet member just for training and conferences. And in the past, what they would do is put their travel on the consent agenda. But I feel that they should have, you know, the liberty to pick and choose at conferences for their own purposes. And it's not just a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. It's forty-five thousand dollars per year, not how it look here. But a hundred and eighty is for the entire cabinet, the superintendent, and all the assistant superintendents in those departments. Just wanted to clarify that.
Ms. Leve, please take the vote.
Trustee Webster.
Nay.
Trustee Turner.
Turner, aye.
Trustee Stewart.
Stewart, aye.
Trustee La French.
La French, aye. Motion passed. Section fifteen, governing board members' reports and announcements. Would any trustee like to give a report or an announcement? Starting with Stewart.
Good evening. I'm going to keep my com- comments short. I was able to go to a conference in Seattle with trustee Turner and trustee Soto. And I think we learned, you know, a bit of what we would, you know, like what direction, you know, the board should go, go through that we should be governed by our policy and working with the superintendent to make sure that those things are being carried out. But the thing that stuck the most was the follow-up because we do vote for things, and then sometimes we don't hear back what happens. Like, for example, with the read, reading specialist. I think it's a great idea. I don't remember not voting for one. I'd have to do some research, but I would surely be in support of that should Dr. Doyzan come. Because I do, do agree, when kids don't know how to read, they struggle across the board because now the math is full of words. That even I'm like, so, you know. So, that was the thing. It's just we vote for things, and then we don't seem to get the follow-up. And it is a lot of information for the board at times. Sometimes, you know, we have the agenda. We have to read the agenda. And sometimes I forget, you know? I've got papers I have to grade, too. I just had to grade my write, writing assessments. And I've got to start to work, work on my, my plans. So, you know, sometimes I do forget. I don't mean to, but, you know, I've got my notes now. Because I really think if we can do that, and I don't see why we can't, why it can't be done. The other thing I just want, want to say is I do want us, if we can, just when we go to bed, can we say a prayer for the victims of Hurricane Holly? can we say a prayer for the victims of Hurricane Helene? It's been devastating on the East Coast. And now Hurricane Milton is here, is on its way to do even more damage. So, and I do love Florida. So if we can just, you know, pray for the East Coast and hope that Milton fizzles out. And that's all I have. Good night.
Thank you. Trustee Webster?
Alrighty. I did take the time this week to type my speech out, so please bear with me. Good evening, AESD friends and family. I want to start by saying thank you for your patience. As at the last board meeting, I was ill and not feeling well enough to come join. I want to take a moment to recap a couple amazing things we were able to do since that last board meeting. It was great to do site walkthroughs with Dr. Walker recently, going through and highlighting only a few of the remarkable things we have going on within our district. I am pleased to say, we were able to go and share time during an assembly over at Adelanto Elementary School, where we heard amazing singing from students and school spirit being inspired. We were able to highlight practices we see within our HOPE program. It is always a pleasure seeing the assorted styles of reformative practices going on within those classrooms. When I get to spend time with this program, this quote often comes to mind. "So often, children are punished for being human. Children are not allowed to have grumpy moods, bad days, disrespectful tones, or bad attitudes. Yet us adults have them all the time. None of us are perfect. We must stop holding our children to a higher standard of perfection than we can attain ourselves." And that was said by Rebecca Eans. We were able to go sit in on an extremely impressive collaboration meeting over at George Visual and Performing Arts School after and see the magnificent work there. Sorry. And magnificent work to the team over there. It was great to see the respect and appreciation for those around the table for ideas to strategizing improvements. Additionally, it was so exciting to share with Dr. Walker the amazing things going on at that school, including the arts hallway, where Dr. Walker got to share firsthand the different arts programs offered within George. It was also a treat to visit Columbia and Mesa Linda with Dr. Walker, where we were able to see how operations were running and how the kids are liking this school year. It was impressive to see the staff working on the different events and the programs lined up for this year. It was exciting to see the esports setup at Columbia, where the students were starting to build the chairs required for this program. Letting the kids take part in the setup, I genuinely believe makes an enormous difference. I want to highlight Ms. Kay over at Mesa Linda. One impressive thing that I honestly believe makes a student's day better is the classroom setting in which they arrive to. When it is warm, or when it is welcoming, warm, music playing, and the teacher is in the mood so powerful it inspires learning, that is what inspires minds to be receptive. I do want to thank our probation officer over at Mesa Linda as well, as I got the pleasure of having a conversation with her. It's great to see someone who understands kids are kids. Thank you for not just being a position, but for being a person, someone I see going and investing in our students. I've said it before, and I will continue to say it. Our students in our district hold one amazing power, led by amazing admin staff, supported and driven by teachers and CSCE staff alike, driving under the teams that come together every day at each site. I want to thank those who are part of everyday operations and the dedicated work that goes into the students' support every day. I do have to bring up the dismay I saw in an email this weekend, not just discussing conditions of some of our buses, but supported with the pictures. It honestly saddened me. I believe we could do so much better. With combined support and collaboration amongst our district, I believe we can achieve this goal of uniting. Our students don't deserve to be treated as second-class, provided buses that are questionable. And that is nicely putting it. Drivers being provided buses that have questionable issues as well. Inspiration goes farther, in my opinion, than intimidation or devaluation. I understand that this is a tense year, with more going on than we can keep up with. I ask that we slow the train. We get those who we need in place before continuing. All these interim positions and investments is becoming an overly concerning subject for me, especially with the lack of appreciation and acknowledgement for those who have been steadfast, loyal, hard-working team members of AESD. I mean no disrespect. But I honestly believe we should slow the excessive investment until we have concluded focusing on the whole family. The family who has proven year after year how much they love our students, and the appreciation should be felt by every position from the bottom to the top. A year ago, we spoke of this district as a family, one that comes together with support in the hard, dark days, celebrates the great, and moves united together. I believe we can accomplish this once again by making sure processes are being upheld and being followed. The decisions are being made in the betterment of all, and the appreciation and the acknowledgement of those who are and have continued to be dedicated is felt. I do want to take a special moment to wish our assistant superintendent of Academic Services a belated birthday, as she is truly appreciated, and we are so thankful to have you. And that concludes my comments for tonight. Thank you.
Trustee Turner?
Yes, first I would like to say thank you, Ms. Thomas, for your statement regarding the reading. It's always been a concern of mine about early childhood reading. And I agree with trustee Stewart that I can support that program 100%. If it was brought to us, then I'm sure that, if it came to us, and we, I don't remember it coming to us, but if it came to us, I'm sure that the board will support that. Anything to the betterment of our children's education, I will support. Because that's what we're here to do, is educate our kids. If we're not doing that, why are we here? You know, and I agree with that. Piggyback on what trustee Stewart talked about at the conference that we attended. It was called coherent governance training. One of the things that I took back was the role of the board versus the role of the superintendent. The role of the board, the board give the superintendent what we want to see, and the superintendent make it happen. The superintendent is the one that run the district, the day-to-day operations of the district. The superintendent is here every day. The board is not here every day. We attend board meetings, we rely on the superintendent to give us information from her cabinet, or he, him from his cabinet. And that's what allow the board to make the decisions that we make here today. What I liked about, one of the things that stuck with me, is the debriefing on every board meeting, to see if we accomplished what we set out to do. And trustee Stewart mentioned policy. We should govern by policy. Everything on our agenda should have a policy attached to it at the bottom, to make sure that we are governing by our policies. And I really like that. And we had talked about that some years ago, is to list the policy number. You don't have to list the whole policy, just the policy number that pertain to that particular agenda item. They also talked about measurement performance. How are we measuring what we're doing? And that's by data. And that report should come to us at least every other board meeting, if not a board meeting. Because we could sit here and talk about, we want achievement, student achievement, and we can sit here and look at our CIPs and say, we're going to increase this by 7%. But how are we measuring that? And I think that data is the most key factor in showing that we are improving or decreasing instead of waiting until the end of the year. We need current, we need month-to-month, if not month-to-month, every other month. How are we doing? Are we making the mark? Not, you know, once a year. A governance calendar. What are we doing every month to look at what we're doing as a board and as a team? We need to list everything on the calendar. In January, we're going to do this. In February, we're going to do this. Just a calendar to keep us in order. And we have one, we had one. But we get so undated in the weeds that we can't govern the way we should. And that's the superintendent's responsibility and her cabinet, to keep us informed. We don't do the day-to-day. We say, this is what we want to see, and it's up to the superintendent and the cabinet to get it done. The name of the conference was, like I said, coherent governance, and it was reinventing your board and making it all happen. It was really good. I really liked some of it. Some of it was, I think, a little redundant. But we have hired a firm to look at our governance, and I'm looking forward to that. Some of that was okay, but I really, that's what I got out of it. Those were the main issues that I got of it, mainly results and debriefing of the board and study sessions. They talked about the board meetings, but also study sessions. You know, where we could talk about what we want to see and what we want to do. And not just a regular board meeting, but have the community come in and also discuss these items with, what do they want to see in their schools? Parents and teachers and everyone, to have a study session, you know, to improve our district. I know trustee President LaFrench is looking at me, but I was really excited. Anything else here? I think that's it. I did have an opportunity to do a walkthrough with Dr. Walker and Mesa Linda. And I have to say that there's a lot of work that needs to be done at Mesa Linda. I was really taken back by the number of kids walking the halls when they should be in classrooms, with their backpacks, going to the bathroom with their backpacks on their backs. It's like you have a pass, but you took your whole backpack, and you should take a few minutes and go to the bathroom and get back to classroom. And I saw a lot of that. And, you know, and I know that that will change. You know, Dr. Walker's on it. I just wanted to report, I did see some good things happen. I saw kids in classroom wanting to learn. I saw some good instruction from teachers. We didn't go into many classrooms, but the classrooms that, the majority of the classrooms that we went into, I was really impressed with what we saw. Kids learning, wanting to learn, teachers walking around, excited about learning. And I know we have some great teachers. We have a lot of great teachers out there, you know? And Mrs. Devetta, what was her last name? Green. You know, I have to tell you, my granddaughter came through this district and from kinder until the eighth grade. And I have to tell you, from kinder to eighth, we keep them the longest. Now we have TK. So we keep our kids 10 years. We keep, and then they go to high school for four, and then they go to college, starting out for, then eight, and then, you know, graduate degrees. And I have to tell you, my granddaughter learnt a lot in Adelanto Elementary School District. She's attending UC San Diego as a biochemist in her third year. She's a junior. So I have to say that we produce some of the greatest minds. So, you know, I'll keep it short, but I just want to do a shout-out. Also, one of the things that, you know, I want to say is, last board meeting, we talked about the after-school program and talked about homework. Homework only being 30 minutes. I submitted an agenda item. It's not on this agenda. Hopefully, it'll be on the next agenda. I would like to see it on the next agenda. Where we increase that homework time and have extra work for our teachers, overtime for our teachers, to operate those homework times in our after-school program. We have money. Last board meeting, Dr. Dwyson indicated that we have nine hours that students must receive instruction. And I think if we take an hour and a half, or whatever you decide, and offer tutoring and homework, then our children would do much better. 30 minutes of homework in the after-school program is just not enough. And I would like our teachers to, you know, receive overtime and supplying those homework programs and tutoring.
When that comes on the agenda, the board can have a discussion.
I sent it.
Yes.
I did. I just want to report that.
Just want to make sure.
I just want to make sure.
No, I know.
That's all I have. It's 8:39.
Thank you very much, trustee Turner. And I do acknowledge, I do acknowledge that you sent that email, and I will forward that email to Dr. Walker. Thank you. When I go look for it.
Two weeks ago.
Yes. Sure will. I will follow up on it in the morning. Dr. Walker has a comment. Thank you for your comments.
You're welcome.
Dr. Walker, please.
Good evening, esteemed President LaFrench, Board of Trustees, Cabinet, AESD Staff, and the Community. I wanted to take a moment to share some of the recent activities and upcoming events that reflect our commitment to our students and community. Over the past couple of weeks, I have successfully conducted school site visits at Adelanto Elementary School, George Visual and Performing Arts Magnet School, Mesa Linda Middle School, which have provided me with valuable insights into our current initiatives and why we do the work that we do. I want to thank trustee Webster for a great experience of walkthroughs and visiting classrooms. I have to say, she engages in a way that I had not seen trustees do before, and it was quite an enjoyable experience. I did have to put on my tennis shoes to keep up with her, and it was really a great experience. In addition to that, I want to thank trustee Turner as well, for our experience to engage in a very academic conversation about the work and what areas we really need to hone in on when it comes to school improvement. In addition to that, my executive cabinet and I enjoyed collaboration with the ADTA and CSCE Chapter 4051 Unions, and it was productive, allowing us the opportunity to share our why, the why we do this work that we do every day, and establish what trust looks like in working together effectively. We look forward to our next collaboration. We also collaborated with the staff of Mesa Linda Middle School to share that we hear their concerns and have started a plan to support the site. In addition, we met with San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools and California Collaborative for Educational Excellence to address needs that we have for our lowest-performing student groups, in addition to sharing our successes. Looking ahead, we're excited to engage in strategic planning sessions that will bring together our community partners. With the support of Learner Center Collaborative, we aim to map out a comprehensive timeline and identify the next steps in creating a framework for the future for the AESD community. Thank you for your continued dedication and support as we work towards our shared goals. Together, I am confident that we will continue to achieve great things for our district and thrive. In closing, I leave you with this. A couple of short videos of performances from the students of Victoria McGathen Hispanic Heritage Assembly. And I want to thank the principal, Alejandro Verdusco, and his AP, Jedet Griffith, for their hard-working efforts. Because these videos really help us to see, this is why we do what we do every day. If you could show the two videos, that would be great. If you could show the two videos, that would be great.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Walker. In my haste, I didn't get to say anything. So I do want to close out, or before we close out, I do want to say thank you, Ms. Thomas, for bringing that back to my attention. And yes, I do advocate for zero to five, because that is my strong point. And as a parent, a former parent, I was blessed to be on this board and my girls and my children to see their mom up here as a parent of this district. I do know that, concurring with trustee Turner, that when I first walked up here, I didn't know what the expectations were. I thought that as a parent, that as a representative for children, that I would be advocating for children. I have always advocated for children as well as teachers because we all know that, yes, I was a teacher before I have the position that I have today. I do get up and hit the Cajon Pass every day at six o'clock in the morning. I come back and it's after five o'clock. And I still have my daughter that's in high school. And then I give my time to A E S D. Sometimes I may forget stuff because I have a 40, 50-hour, sometimes 60-hour job for the county of San Bernardino. But I love what I do. And you're right, literacy for those preschoolers is what I advocate for. So tomorrow at 6:15 in the morning, I will be talking to one of these people on the cabinet, because that's what I do. I call people at 6:15 in the morning. You can always call me, because I'm on the Cajon Pass talking. If you want to talk to LaShawn LaFrenche, call me at 6:15 in the morning. I'll gladly talk to you. But tomorrow, I'll be calling, talking about specialists, a literacy specialist to one of the people next to me early in the morning. But I do thank you. I thank you for bringing that back in the front of my mind. And I apologize for not answering my emails, but I will move that forward for trustee Turner as well. And I want to say to everyone that's going to have a fall break next week, I won't. But everyone that's going to have a fall break while I'm on the freeway, I hope that you're sleeping in. I hope that you're waking up late, not at 5:30 in the morning, four o'clock in the morning. I hope that you're having your fuzzy slippers on and you are enjoying your week. Please get lots of rest. I hope that the children as well are getting lots of rest. And for those that are able to go and be provided services from us next week, that's a wonderful thing. I would have loved for that to be something that my children would have been able to enjoy on intercession. Because sometimes when you have working parents, you may not have anyone there, they're there by themselves, taking care of themselves during that time. So I want everyone to sleep in next week and think about me while I'm on the Cajon Pass. Everyone drive safe. I have one last thing, I'm sorry. I was informed and I would like to have everyone say special prayers for one of our teachers, Ms. Debbie Watson, from Ted Vic. Ted Vic, I'm sorry, that was in an accident while driving home last Friday from work. A lot of times, you know, we get on these freeways, highways, and you say goodbye to your loved ones in the morning. Or sometimes you leave and they don't even have a chance to say goodbye because you never know what will happen on your return. So please say prayers for her and keep her in your prayers. Okay. Thank you. Pretty sure I didn't take as long as Christine Turner took, but, you know. We have to do something about time limits. Let's move right along to seventeen adjournment. May I get a motion to adjourn?
I have one more. Webster, I motion to adjourn.
May I get a second?
Stewart, I second.
Can we go into discussion?
Ms. LaVey, will you please take that vote?
Trustee Webster?
Aye.
Trustee Turner?
Turner, aye.
Trustee Stewart?
Stewart, aye.
Trustee LaFrenche?
LaFrenche, aye, motion passed for zero. Everyone enjoy their night and thank you for coming.
Madam President, the time is eight forty-nine P M.
Thank you.